Good morning, I'd like to call this work session regular meeting. Session, if we could please stand for the pledge allegiance and slithery flag.
Our pledge allegiance and slithery flag, by the United States of America. We are a republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's the slithery flag of the state of New Mexico, the ZS of American friendship among the United States.
I said I lied, I didn't want to be.
Good morning, everyone. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is approval of work session regular meeting agenda. Some move?
Some move.
Okay, any discussion? All are moving there? Okay, elected official reports.
Good morning, Commissioner, and good evening. I will be speaking for the firm. That is reason why we're getting to the meeting. For the 2018 property taxes, we have a collection rate of ninety-two point seventy-five percent. We have collected five million, six hundred, seventy-eight thousand, six hundred, ninety-five dollars and fifty-one cents, with four hundred, forty-two thousand, nine hundred, eighteen and eighty-seven cents outstanding. Since our last report, we have collected twenty-seven thousand, one hundred, seventy-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. And for the fiscal year of nineteen-twenty, the total receipts we have processed have been one million, six hundred, sixty thousand, three hundred, sixty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. May I stand for any questions?
Do you have any question?
Thank you.
Thank you. No report? That's it, no other questions? Okay, moving on to the next item. Public input during this portion of our meeting. You will, we have it on there?
Because it's a combined.
I didn't see that, I'm sorry. County reports, Mr. Carrion.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman, Commission members. My report for the reporting period July ninth through August first, two thousand and nineteen. Detention facility update. At the time of this report, Grant County Detention Center had six vacancies. We are currently accepting applications, and we have three applicants. We're going to go through the process and hopefully we'll provide them with an offer of employment. Item number two on the training update, Sergeant Galindo's monthly training report. Two newly hired officers have started the hundred-and-sixty-hour basic training, and also we're utilizing Sergeant Galindo to conduct prisoner transport and ship, cover ship vacancies. Item number three is the inmate intervention, attended big inmate art symposium, scheduled for October ninth at the Western New Mexico Library. I'll be conducting meetings with volunteers in August for a pre-planning meeting. Also included in the intervention project, Nancy Gregory from Blue Cross Blue Shield represents continues to visit the detention center and continues care management for the inmates. So I've approved a scheduled time for her to come and talk to the inmates, determine if they want to participate in her just transition of care program. The program, if the inmates agree to participate, allows Miss Gregory to follow the participants for ninety days after release in hopes that they will continue with the care coordination program. Miss Gregory is also getting their Medicaid application and reinstatement renewed once they elect to participate in her program. She's also, that's one of the things that she's coming to the facility to do. I've authorized her to come in every Tuesday at ten o'clock in the morning, and she'll see, she'll give me a list of inmates that she'd like to see, and so we're allowing her to come in and do that. Miss Gregory is also getting their Medicare application. Assistance is also provided to help them contact any other resource providers they might need. Currently, in her statistics, there are ten inmates contacted, seven accepted the program, one declined, and two are not able to be contacted. And that was because they had already been released, and when we gave her the information, she attempted to contact, contact them after they'd been released, and she wasn't able to do that. There are fourteen inmates currently incarcerated who will be contacted by Miss Gregory, and she was scheduled to do that Tuesday, but she wasn't able to come into the facility, so she'll follow up on most of the fourteen. Community report, I attended the two council advisory board meeting that was held on July twenty-second. We're awaiting nominations for the recognition award program for the month of August. The monthly agency totals, arrest totals for July nineteenth through August first, Silver City Police Department thirty, Grant County Sheriff Department ten, New Mexico State Police seven, Bear Police two, Santa Clara zero, Hardy Police zero, probation and parole of the rest of the agencies. We didn't have any numbers for them, they were all zero. Now, August first, two thousand and nineteen, there were seventy-nine inmates awaiting court proceedings, eight were sentenced to the Grant County Detention Center, one is awaiting prison, and two are waiting rehab. The other thing I have is the detention graphs that I provided for you, the head count, at the time of this report, the head count was at ninety. Currently, this morning, the head count is at ninety-nine. The average daily population of two nineteen, for two thousand and nineteen, is twenty-one females, seventy-one males. At that time, that was the average daily population, it was total ninety-two. Special manager's report for July thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, is three males and one female. And I also include a few, a snapshot of our accreditation, Officer Brooke Howders, snapshot of where we're at with the accreditation process. That's my report, sir, if you have any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Just a clarification on the detention, on the, am I loud?
It's so loud that it can beep out.
Oh, my goodness. On the, on the professional standards memo, I assume that that date is really April seventh, two thousand and nineteen, not twenty?
On the accreditation report?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. The, out of the, the numbers that we gave you on the accreditation report from Bobby Burke, I believe that he put in his report, there were thirty-six, they had complete thirty-six of the standards, if I'm correct, I don't know if I'm looking at, if I have.
Thirty-two, thirty-two. There's, so the first sentence says, "New Mexico Adult Detention Professional Standards Council finalized and approved these standards on April seventh, two thousand and ten." Is that really supposed to be two thousand and nineteen?
I, um, no, probably two thousand.
No, that's correct. The first set, um, no.
So that's when they were created originally, not when we started, okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman, a brief question. I might be forgetting, you told us this already, the just transition program looks great. I'm really glad that Miss Gregory is coming down to do that. My recollection is there were a couple other?
Yes.
Providers?
Yes.
Statewide, are they also participating, or have they somehow gotten together and said, "Blue Cross, you do this"?
Yes, yes, from the other program, the House Care League, and I think that, if that's a true asking.
No, I think they all, my recollection was that the group that replaced mine statewide, which I can't remember, Western Skies, exactly, that at least that one of the statewide Medicaid providers also had this program. So I was curious how we had gone with Blue Cross.
Oh, the other medical, the other MCOs?
The other MCOs, that's exactly what I'm looking at.
Yes, sir, the only other one was Western Skies out of Las Cruces, and she has not been as active as Nancy Gregory has. She's contacted me a couple of times, this was probably a month or so ago, and she has not recontacted me, but that's the only one of the other MCOs that has contacted me in order to try and continue with their process.
So that's perfect answer, it's not, we're not making the choice, it's just a matter of which event is doing the outreach. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We're able to get over to hurry Monday and do a bunch of shoulder work to help those residents get in and out of their driveways and clean some culverts over there, they had a pretty good rain over there last weekend. Other than that, we've just been working on Rosedale Road. We got that last section of the rehab build-up, and we're laying a base course on it today, and I'm hoping to be paving over there by Monday or Tuesday of next week. And then it's, we're done with, with our part of the milling part of it, and it's just up to the contractor to finish paving it. I'm still looking, hopefully, to get done by the end of this month with that, with that project over there. I tell them I've got.
You have any questions?
Earl, what's the status on that low water crossing right there on Plenty Tank Road by Karen Car's place?
We met with the engineers Monday, I believe, Monday afternoon, and they're working on the design, deal with it now. Hopefully, we'll get it within, hopefully by the end of this month somewhere.
Great, thank you.
Just want to mention, thank you for putting that street sign up there. Got an email, and I really appreciate it, and all you guys' hard work up there, thank you.
Any other question?
Mr. Chairman, members of work, I hope we have a whole lot. I know maintenance department's dealing a lot with some drainage issues at Baton, and we're hoping to control that as, you know, the monsoons keep coming, and so we're working at that pretty hard. Fires, on the fire side, not much going. I know there's about thirty-two fires in Nahila, not just in Grant County, but Nahila as a whole that they're monitoring, nothing major. I'll have the Forest Service here at the next meeting to give us an update on how everything is going so far. Other than that, everything is running good. I know Airport Manager is Rebecca, but not much to report there, so if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any further?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I only have one item that I wanted to report to you. As I mentioned in our previous meeting, Grant County was selected to submit a proposal for the intervention demonstration project, which was the two-point-five million dollars that was awarded to, through the legislature, to the Behavioral Health Services Division. Our proposal was successful. We will be receiving a little over four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars to do various behavioral health programs within the detention center. One of the, well, the, the biggest part of this is, it's called a FACT program, and it's something that's relatively new, it's forensic assertive community treatment program. We'll be putting out an RFP for, for a provider to provide those services. And what it is, is it's a, it's targeted to those individuals who have serious mental illness, co-occurring, and co-occurring substance abuse, use disorders that are within the criminal justice system. So it fits directly in with our stepping up program, and it's a fairly new program, but it's, it's, it's successful in other communities across the United States. So we're looking at that. Also, be expanding some therapy through Adalcore in our jail. They want to introduce this called moral recognition therapy. It's a group therapy project that they can see a higher volume of individuals, so we can treat more in a different, different type setting. So be expanding that, then increasing the stepping up coordinator to fully, fully implement that stepping up program. We still have, all of our partners are still very engaged in that process, and we're starting to put all the pieces together now. We're having the opportunity to look at our transportation challenges as well as housing challenges, so part of that funding would be for that person. Also, crisis intervention training for law enforcement and detention center personnel, as well as a comprehensive behavioral health training program for our detention staff. This program, they're looking at this as a potential for reoccurring funding, so this was just a demonstration, I think there's five counties participating, and hopefully we can all demonstrate the need for these services in our detention center and see some reoccurring funding in the next, the next legislative session. So that's the goal, and we'll do our very best to make sure that we are successful with this. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. I'm excited, but a little nervous all at the same time, it'll be a lot of work, but I think it's something that, that we can, we can definitely do.
Thank you. I appreciate all that hard work, and another deadline is a little forward, and there's a lot of work, and I forget how many pages, and then having to wait for others to, you know, get information to you, but I, you know, I think we really appreciate what you've done, and thank you. How many years does that money last?
Just one year.
That's a one year.
So it's a one-year, it's a one-year pilot, and then hopefully, if we are all, they'll be watching us very closely. We have to report monthly, they'll be watching us very closely. There's Mika, I forget her last name, she'll actually be the liaison between this program and the legislators. They'll be, be monitoring this very closely to make sure that we're doing what we say we're going to do, and obviously, we all want to demonstrate the needs to them. We've, we've talked very loudly about this for many, many years, as we struggle with this, they listen, so we certainly don't want to fail, and we would love to see some reoccurring funds, and I think, I think everyone has now realized that it is an issue, and we do need some funding, we do need some help. So unfortunately, this is only for one year, but hopefully.
Which means we have four or five months before the session, right, to show them that we're doing a good job, we even have a year.
Correct.
Well, congratulations, and good luck, and I'm usually so much anxiety.
No, I'm excited.
Yeah.
Who are, who are the other four counties, Charlie?
Sierra County, I believe, San Juan County was one.
That makes sense. I found that one, that was us.
Actually, I think Rio Arriba was, but I, I heard that maybe they chose not to participate. I don't recall the other.
Are they all rural?
The idea was that they were rural frontier counties, and I don't know that you would consider San Juan rural, but because of the statistics around serious mental illness as well as substance and alcohol abuse, those, those were all the things that.
Fair amount of rural areas.
They should be.
They do, but as far as like their jail being rural, like comparison to ours, so that was the criteria, was your statistical data, as well as there was specific language in the bill that target was rural and frontier communities like ours, who don't have the access to behavioral health that, you know, in the, in the Rio Grande corridor.
Well, congratulations, that's really exciting, and I think that could be a real boom to our community.
Oh, I forgot one other part that goes in that, totally slipped my mind. Also, a discharge reentry planner, that would be a position in the jail for that year, and so it would just coincide with what the MCOs are doing, but it would be, we would be able to meet with every single individual that is leaving our facility to make sure that we have a plan for their reentry as far as any services that they might need, so it would be one person dedicated, not relying on outside contractors. It would be a person within our facility that would be able to meet with every single individual that we discharged to help them be more successful upon their reentry.
So then that person would be able to coordinate with like Bridges to Care and all of those sorts of things?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, any questions?
That seems a little overwhelming, how many programs did you mention? Was it six of them?
Okay, it was six, yeah.
So, I mean, I guess, I understand that this isn't for accreditation, but are there, is there anything in this funding that will overlap with accreditation and help push that forward?
No, sir.
So, we have, it says you currently meet thirty-two core standards of one-hundred-and-ninety-four. I guess I need to get with Mike and study more about what those standards are, but it just looks like something in those hundred-and-thirty standards would be, would have something to do with what you're doing.
So the accreditation program is more of security policies, procedures, doing what we're supposed to do, there are all of those standards. I would say we're a little farther ahead than, than maybe what that reflects, but we're giving us a spot on it today, so we'll have an idea of what are these standards before we bring them to you.
Okay.
I mean, I shouldn't say that this has nothing to do with that, but it's more of your practices and procedures within the jail. This is trying to keep people from reentering the jail time and time again because we have a lack of services or the lack of being able to connect them to the services that they need, providing the level of services we need in the jail. So part of this is on Adalcore, our provider, and that is one of the components of accreditation, is your medical and what you're providing, and are we doing what we're supposed to do according to all of these standards?
Okay, thanks.
Does anybody know?
My question is, Charlie, does it matter how much time is spent in the jail? So I mean, I'm asking like, there's, there's people that go into the jail because it was a short term because of a DUI or something, but will every prisoner get this service?
That's the goal, is that we don't, just because they're only in there for a few days, even if we can have that conversation with them when they leave, say, here, here is, you know, here are all the programs that are available to you. This particular intervention program is for non-violent offenders, which the majority of ours are, but we wouldn't like turn someone away only because they're in there for a short amount of time.
No, no.
They may not be able to get the treatment while they're in there, but we can certainly make sure that we provide that connection once they're released, but there's not more, not, not a lot we could do other than the initial screening. Is that what you're talking about, what can we do for them when they're in their facility?
No, when they leave, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but you have a lot of DUIs that go into there, you have a lot of probation and parole violations that go in there, and a lot of it has to do with, with substance abuse. And I just see that as a revolving door, and a program like this might, might help stop some of that, so I actually see how this goes.
Any other questions for the county manager? Okay, there's all the county reports, so now I can move on. So, next item is public input during this portion of our meeting. We welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a, on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Okay, seeing none, move on to the next item of the agenda is approval of meetings.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the July ninth special meeting minutes, July eighteenth special meeting minutes, July twenty-third work session meeting minutes, July twenty-fifth regular meeting minutes, July twenty-ninth special meeting minutes.
I second that motion. Yeah, the second by Commissioner Brown, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So moving on to resolutions, consideration of resolution R-19-49, adopting an infrastructure capital improvement plan for Grant County.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve resolution number R-19-49.
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Edwards, I mean, actually, I would like you to take that back. I believe this is part of a continuing effort to educate us on the infrastructure capital improvement plan, that we're still in a period where commissioners are offering feedback to Misha. I think we got an email, Misha couldn't be with us at this meeting today, but he wanted this on here in case we had further discussion ourselves, but that, again, it's, I thought that you were looking at next meeting to approve this. This is the last meeting I was.
We must approve it, the last meeting of the month.
Right. Is it, you have an impression that, that he feels this is ready now, because I thought that he was willing to wait for the last meeting?
He's willing to wait, but it's dependent, you are the one that gets to decide the order of this, so you mean, the commissioner will determine what order this is placed in. If you're willing to do that today, we'll certainly take that, because there is a lot more work that has to be done. There's several pages that go to each one of these particular projects, so that would give him more time to make sure that our, our plan is complete, if you're ready to do it today. We don't have to wait, but if you prefer, that is completely within.
Well, then, my, my vote would be for waiting, and it's because I have progressed on it, and I have not read many of the, of the pages that accompany some of these items. So that's my request.
So, just a point of order clarification, would we not make the motion and then have that discussion during discussion and have you make a motion to the table?
We could, we could just start by tabling. But, okay, I just, I mean, we've done, but we often have discussion before we have any motion.
Right. Yeah. I mean, to me, whichever direction you want to head, I mean, I do have some things in here to that.
Yeah, one in particular, you brought up the county vehicle replacement.
Right.
During my commission report, we'll, we'll talk to you about the energy summit I was just at, one of the tracks in that summit was about electric vehicles, and I wanted to talk to Misha regarding the potential for using that line for slow conversion to electric vehicles, but that's just one of the items that I feel unfinished about the ICIP.
You know, and I'm looking like county road department equipment, you know, that, I mean, they do a lot of work, their equipment's not out of its power, and I think that, to me, county road department equipment should be for the county vehicle replacement, yes. So, I mean, there's a lot of thought that needs to go into this, I mean, everybody knows, I guess, you know, my number one would be the town memorial park. I think number two to me would be the children outdoors, which is one, you know, that, that third one's the one that I'm, I'm, I'm having a little trouble with.
So, Mr. Chair, so I asked Sherlene about that this morning because the Grant County Road Department equipment was in position number three when I met with Sherlene, Misha on that, and Sherlene, would you just explain your thinking on that?
Someone that Misha explained it to me in a room, you can jump in if you want. Yes, we need the road department equipment, but we also need many other vehicles as well that have many, many miles on them. At this point, I would say we would take either one and be pleased with whichever one you put in number three. Eventually, this would just provide us a jumpstart to be able to get us in a position where we can start replacing these vehicles through our own capital process and our own plan, but we just need a little help to get there. This money with the road department would get them in pretty good shape as far as equipment, but then we would have to start focusing on the actual vehicle replacement, maintenance needs vehicles, or needs vehicles. You know, the accessories requested a vehicle as well as the treasure has to choose the one that's assigned, yes, so I would be, I would think either one would be a great one to put in number three. It would tell you that I think that would get the road department in good shape, correct?
What do you mean, would we not as far as road department?
Roller and a.
Yeah, for the equipment, it was a replacement of a steel-well roller which we use for patching, and the rotary room we have, which we only use mostly just for our chip seal projects, and was talking with Misha, and I talked to Manager Webb about it, too. I could wait, you know, another year or something, but if we can get caught up with our vehicles like Manager Webb was saying, I mean, this has been going on long before any of the, any of the commissioners that are standing now have been here before Manager Webb, and if we can just get caught up now, and then, you know, instead of being able, having to put it on the ICIP, they could probably budget for a vehicle every year for a department or something like that, but it's just getting caught up, we're just so far behind with, with all the departments right now.
How many vehicles are in this county vehicle replacement?
I think I had four or five just for the road department, two for the maintenance, one for the.
Accessor.
Accessor, one for the airports, and then I was talking with the detention center, got with Mike, and he's looking at trying to replace a transport van also.
So we could have as many as ten vehicles.
The only reason I bring that up is because, especially now, in the, in the monsoons that are rolling and everything that, you know, you get behind if you don't have the equipment, so that was my question, trying to understand, you know, what's more important to us, a highway vehicle or a piece of equipment that's going to help you do your job, and that's the question I had, because I can imagine after these rains, how you guys are going to be agreeing with rains, especially with, with our roads.
Right, this, like I said, with the steel wheel, it's mainly used, we're doing it like on projects, we're rolling our base course out there with it now, but mainly it's used for our puddle patching, and like I said, the sweeper we've got, it's, it's twenty-something years old too, but it's a seasonal piece of equipment, and usually the only time we use it is during our chip seal season, and like I said, I can, I can put that on the back burner if we need to. Like I said, it's up to your discretion, but sooner or later, we've got to get caught up with these, these vehicles.
Well, given the community, I mean, yeah, those things are, you know, it's priority rank. right now. You know, my only thing with this whole thing is somehow, and I keep probably saying that every other meeting, is somehow we need to put something in place for our vehicles to replace some of ours. So, this program or anything, because I looked at some of the silly stuff that's on this ICIP plan, that probably should be up in the top five, and it's that we continue to have that. But I also understand that we need these vehicles, but I'd like to see some time so we can start replacing vehicles on our own eventual vehicles. I'll be with your explanation, thank you.
And that is the goal, right?
Mr. Chair, there's something I don't understand about how we package the ICIP for the legislature. Is there, would it make sense to combine some of these lines into one request that would all go in number three? I mean, they're all related to transportation. I don't know the rules, I guess, is what it comes down to for how we decide what are our top five. It seems like there's some flexibility.
So, your top three is what we would, what is funded through capital outlay. So, whatever we go, whatever you submit to the legislature for capital outlay requests must be in your top three on your ICIP. So, if it's not in your top three, then that gives me opportunity for that to be detailed.
So, by way of example of what I'm trying to get at, county vehicle replacement and quarter communes passenger bus are very similar items, right? It's, the quarter communes is not exactly county, it's a JBL, but the county, you know, could provide a bus to the quarter communes with legal. So, those, that could actually be part of our number three, couldn't it? And thereby, taking advantage of additional money that might be made in the top three and given to the county, right? One of the things that sticks in mind is we don't want our top three to be too small. We want there to be some flexibility there in case there's additional money available. I don't know, again, I don't know the rules for what we can combine into one whole one. I'm really happy the trails and outdoor recreation plans in the top three, super happy, but that's only a hundred thousand. So, it means we need to make the others larger.
So, let me, I agree with you completely. I believe that we could combine that, and I'm thinking about the application and our justification in that application. We would just have to detail what is it that we're asking for, and hopefully they would give us that flexibility based upon those needs. So, I think that that's doable, and I think that that would be received that way, that way as, you know, basically if maybe it's a fleet replacement program, whether that's equipment, whether that's buses, whether that's sheriff's department, accessory, whatever. So, I agree with you there, I think we can do that.
So, you give the chance that you could combine numbers three, four, and five?
Yes, but I will tell you, part of the thing that they want to see, like, for example, I'm going to use the outdoor recreation and why that's only a hundred thousand, is through all of these conversations with Marty and everything else that's been going on, we think that it would cost us about a hundred thousand dollars to develop the master plan. They're going to want, they're not going to give you any money until they know that you have a plan and this is what you're going to do with that. So, that would be the first step, and we would be able to identify in that application, this is phase one, phase two is actually construction trails or whatever it is that phase two would be. They're not going to give you a million dollars when we don't even have a plan in place. So, that was the reason why that number is so low.
Sure, and I don't mean to object to that.
But I just wanted to explain that was the rationale for that. But we certainly, and then I think Misha's explained that, we could definitely bump up the number for Baton Park, but that is our estimate for the engineering and architectural and all of the costs that will be associated with the CDBT grant if we are successful in getting that funded. But we can remember, we can amend this, so we just have to get it submitted. We could amend that amount, or we could ask for more now, and we could still explain that we have additional funding sources or whatever.
So, I would, I would then definitely be in favor of bumping up the baton figure based on what, you know, what you're saying about making sure that the top.
Well, if the trail is, do you rather do that than combine?
No, I'm saying both. So, combine three, four, and five, oop, three, four, and five into one, which would be number three, then baton increase it, then.
Trails and outdoors.
So, I do have one clarifying question. So, the passenger bus.
Yeah, I was getting ready to go.
Oh, sorry. The passenger bus and the vehicle replacement, our vehicles, is road department equipment combinable into that?
I believe it is.
Okay. So, yeah, so I would definitely.
I wasn't sure about that at all.
Yeah, I wasn't either, but I would be in favor of then combining three, four, and five into number three, which would make that number bigger. But I would also be in favor of increasing the dollars going into the baton item, because I think what we're going to be faced with is, and that's going to just, that project's just going to grow and grow and grow.
Right, because hopefully that will tie into the outdoor recreation and Arizona.
So, if we start that, that, you know, five hundred thousand, or whatever seems appropriate there.
Yeah, but just looking at the town park, that's, I guess, ultimate goal there is outdoor recreation, you know. You know, we talked about economic development, I think that's part of that, outdoor recreation and, you know, with, you know, the children outdoors plan too.
Well, I think the trails and outdoor plan, you know, part of what we have to do is make sure that it includes Baton Park, so that the plan justifies what we're asking for to spend at Baton Park. I see two things going hand in hand.
Right, and I love it. They're different, but they go hand in hand, I guess, is what I was trying to say.
Well, I think the other piece too is that, to me, there's a lot of different definitions of outdoor recreation. So, we need to also make sure in that scope that, that the scope of work for that plan includes that. I'm not convinced a hundred thousand is enough to make sure that all of that is covered. I would, I would actually advocate for increasing that number to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Mr. Chair, I've been, also been studying what the legislature is going to have for next year. So, it's quite possible that we'll have another good year, but then after this, this year, it's quite possible that those revenues will dry up and we'll go back to, to, you know, what we were before. And last year being, you know, very new to this, but I do remember seeing so many of those ICIPs at pretty big amounts. I was surprised to see how many millions that went in there, and I was surprised to see how many millions got funded. So, I think I go with Commissioner over here, Ms. Brown, let's put one in there, you know. And the other thing I wanted to know is, this being my first goal in submitting, does the hierarchy of how they're placed on the, does that really count? So, if we put the trails at the head of the list, does that really matter? Or are they just looking at the top three?
Commissioner Solis, there is no word. They're looking at the top three. The legislators are going to fund what they want to fund. If someone is particularly interested in our outdoor recreation, they're going to put their money there if they feel, and that's going to depend a lot on how you lobby those legislators. We just know that if you're going to submit a request, it's going to be in the top three. So, the top three matter, what you said, no?
Well, that was, maybe sort of my point, is no matter what we put on there, I think it's going to be essential that we lobby for it. You know, and talking to our US senators, they seem to indicate that projects like our outdoor, you know, Baton Park, the trails and stuff like that are high interest right now. So, we might stand a better chance right now of getting something. So, I'm certainly in favor of bumping those up. I really see that our trails and outdoors would really be tied to the greater plan and everything, the larger scheme of stuff that would allow us to expand on our natural resources here.
Well, I was just, you know, looking at the logistics of this. Do you need to come back to us with a list based on what we've been discussing, okay, we have been here and for, as far as you're concerned, we're not making problems for what you have to do.
A good idea of how.
One thing that occurs to me too is that what we're looking at here is, you know, if we're talking about increasing it, like Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Solis have suggested. So, the column on the far right is the total amount that these projects are for, and so maybe we should consider going for the total amount. So, in other words, I still want to advocate for the trails and open space plan to be under fifty thousand, but the total amount on the ICIP for Baton is a million dollars. The total amount for county vehicle replacement is six hundred thousand. So, why not go, you know, all out and ask for those total amounts? And then put something else at the end there? And I'm asking that question, I'm really asking that question, why?
If you, 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 if
It's not within one year, but I will tell you that in their reporting system, legislators look at that, and if you have a bunch of projects hanging out there that you haven't made any progress on, probably not gonna see any money the following year. So, we would have to make significant amount of progress, but it does not give you status one year, within one year.
Because we don't have anything hanging out now that would prevent this plan from happening.
No, my question was, again, being you do this, do they ever say, okay, they're asking for a million, but we're gonna just add down to that? Or is it generally, you get what in your request?
Commissioner Solis, number one, it depends from your ear. Sometimes you get everything you ask for, and sometimes they only give you partial funding. For example, I think we asked for, I don't know, one fifty for one of these projects, and one sixty for vehicles, and got one twenty or something. So, it depends on their amount of money and how they split that up. Sometimes you get it all, sometimes you get a portion of it. You just have to be able to make a portion of that work.
That's the best.
And just to understand this further, when we talk about who's doing that splitting up, who's making the decision, it's our representatives and our senator in San Antonio, right? So, our three people who we're talking to about this. And our own projects, again, correctly from our own, are competing with projects that, for example, the prospectors identify, right? For capital out.
Ours goes in with the prospectors.
Oh, is that?
Ours goes in with them.
Yes, exactly, it goes in with them.
Everything else is in there.
I mean, all the people who've gone with the prospectors, is what I should have said. So, there's, there's a point at which we're potentially crowding out other good projects, seen opposed by other entities in the community. And, you know, I think we should keep that in mind too. It's unusual, I suppose, for a commissioner to say that we shouldn't shoot for the money, but I think there's reason to be more realistic than shooting for the money. And part of that reason is that there are a lot of other entities in this county that are deserving of the capital out there, and it benefits our residents. But I think it'd be helpful to us, since we're much more aware of this than you and other members of the staff, to sort of have an idea of what's a reasonable amount for the county to shoot for. Because it's super easy to just add things in and say, we want all of this, because of course we want all of this. But, you know, I found six hundred thousand, which is what the top three had to right now, actually probably a reasonable portion for the county to ask for, given all the other means that will come up during the prospectors' process. Making it an even million, you know, maybe that's acceptable, but if you add all those things that you were just talking about, you know, we're talking about two point two something million, and I would consider that unreasonable.
But if that was the logic that they're using, then the university did a lot of crowding up last year.
So, the university taps into a broader range of legislatures, because just out of three, right? There are seven, I think, or I think seven throughout the state. And they get funded on a statewide basis, not just by out of three, seven, they also tap into many of the government plans.
Well, it was my understanding that this was ultimately the governor's approval. They got, maybe we lobby our senators, you know, our politicians, and they lobby the governors.
So, that's my point, it's not the same pool. They're not crowding out the same projects that I'm already, we would be crowding out.
Well, I, then that's my misunderstanding, because I saw the university really lobbying the governor.
Exactly. No, that's not my misunderstanding, that's correct.
So...
But we're not lobbying the governor.
Definitely we would be.
No, that's not true. There are different pockets. There's a government pocket, there's a senate pocket, there's a house pocket. And unless, you know something I don't know, we are gonna make a lot more effective use of our time lobbying the senate pocket and the house pocket than lobbying the governor. Because the governor focuses on statewide things like public universities, rather than county-specific things that they leave to the legislatures.
Well, then, I, you know, I have to educate myself more, because my, it was my understanding that our local politicians would lobby the governor, and the governor had the ultimate say-so on the ICIP. And usually it's what's the governor, it's what, you know, our rep and our senator would put in there, but...
Perhaps we should have one of our representatives or senators come and give their perspective on those.
And maybe that would be great, but what do we do for right now? Because we're going to have to make that decision, at least by next meeting, right?
Can I make a question to make you answer your question?
Well, I'm just a little speculation on my part. In a sense, yes, the governor does, because she does want to veto capital out of the projects, based on your application, so, but...
That's kind of weird.
Um, well, it depends on who governs.
Yeah, right. If you have to say it to the governor.
Some people like capital out, they get vetoed. You know, we, maybe that's, I mean, so, technically, she does, but your lobbying efforts are much better spent with your legislators, because they're the ones that have allocated a lot of money, and they're the ones that's making the recommendations. And as long as our application meets all of the criteria that they can defend it, typically those things don't get vetoed, unless, you know, it's just something that she absolutely hates, or, you know, there's some other criteria that we missed. But I would certainly not put anything in front of you that I thought would get kicked out, because it doesn't meet any criteria for the capital out process. So, I...
Go ahead. Sorry. So, a suggestion here, looking at the Trails and Outdoors, you know, upping into one fifty, these are just a suggestion, you know, Baton Park three hundred, and then if we combine the three, four, and five into one, looking at that, it's like a hundred thousand? Because I think, I haven't done the math, but I think it's a little under that.
That's my...
So, I mean, that suggestion could be there, so, see what, hopefully we end up with.
Two hundred and nine fifty, if I, if I read.
I mean, to me, I think that seems reasonable, and, I mean, hopefully we could get some of the senators to move on.
So, we should make for Baton Park three fifty for an even million? Although I'm fine with the nine fifty.
Well, I haven't tried to go further, I probably forced the sounds to five hundred.
Well, I'd say I did, that's one million one hundred and fifty thousand.
You know, to me, I'm just trying to be realistic with Baton Park, I mean, God, I wish we had all the money and want them to do it, but to me, sometimes I look at it as phases, and what's realistic to Santa Fe and what they're doing, and, you know, hopefully we can get that, that grant, you know, that's, seven hundred and fifty thousand, that's not gonna be spent in one day, that that's gonna be a period of time, and then hopefully we can throw, they throw three hundred thousand at us, that adds more time to complete these projects, and like what our county manager's saying, we have a certain timeframe, we don't want to get caught up to where we can't complete phase three, four, whatever it is either, so, you know, that's what I'm looking at too, when I look at some of this stuff. I mean, the roads, equipment, that's easy to use, you know, that's just the way I feel about it.
So, the Baton money is for engineering, et cetera, correct?
And the staff's estimate is that the engineering, et cetera, is two hundred and fifty thousand, right? So, when you guys propose raising it to three hundred or three fifty, what is that additional money for?
I would say that it would be to start whatever we want on phase one, which would probably be fixing drainage problems and so in that nature.
Our argument would be that no matter what the engineering comes out with, there'll be some need for the hundred thousand extra, right? Even if we can't tell you right now what it is, because we don't have the plans, that would be the argument, right?
So, I understand that, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, the staff has to be able to justify this in the application. So, if we ask for three hundred thousand, we have to know what is that three hundred thousand going to be spent on. We have to be able to say that we are going to spend it on X, Y, and Z.
Well, you have a million dollars worth of needs identified at Baton Park, so, I think that should be pretty...
Well, that's not identified, that's just assumed. There's a difference between identifying the engineering study and assuming that there will be something, which I'm very comfortable assuming there will be something.
So, yeah, so, you know, I think when we talk to Baton, it's like, first we know that we have ADA issues that we need to fix, and then we also know we have drainage, that whole other phase is looking at the drainage, and we also know that the drainage is going to require a complete study to look at that. We tried doing it without one, and obviously that's not working, so, I just, I just...
Is that drainage, is that drainage study included in this two hundred and fifty thousand?
No, this two hundred and fifty thousand was what we had estimated as engineering fees, et cetera, all of the things that would go along with the CCBG award if we were successful.
So, could, so in response to the question Commissioner Brown had, what would that be? So, could we add the drainage study into this? Could that be an identifiable thing that would be done? Say we increase this amount to three hundred thousand, could that specific thing be a drainage study, or is that a different phase?
I think that's a different phase, because you're kind of concluding your whole project. So, rather than having one specific project that says we are identifying this, now you're saying, we're gonna do this, this, and this, and we think we need this, but we really don't know if we need this, and how much...
But if we spend a million dollars on ADA compliance, and it's washed out by a monsoon...
Wait, I'm...
Well, it just seems to me like the two go together, but...
Also, there's some current needs, you know, infrastructure needs, because I thought we said we need a, you know, like for the sewer, you know, for some of the bathrooms that aren't working, that they need to run a new sewer line down there. So, that's certainly an infrastructure need, you know, so, some additional money, and that, that could be, you know, opening up, you know, phase one, because your infrastructure needs are gonna have to be done before anything gets started.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the sewer issues are being resolved with the bottom money, that has to be fixed now, we can't wait on that, so we're using bottom funds to fix the lift station and take care of that. We can, we can change the title of this Baton and include those things into separate phases, and identify different potential funding sources, so that's completely doable. I think we can rationalize that in the application and make it successful.
So, let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question, quick, so, I guess I'm on the scene, we asked for seven hundred and fifty thousand, from the ground, two hundred and fifty of that's gonna go into engineering and plans and all that.
So, it would be an addition to that, so we would, if the county would have to come up with a lot of the engineering, and so if we did not get this money, that would come out of our pockets if we were successful with that, so that piece is pretty critical that we...
Right.
We can, we can make an application, we can change the title of that line to, to tally out all of those things and make it, and definitely make that of these projects.
I think it's a good idea, I think it probably goes together too. And if we get denied, then, then we've gotten that knockdown, what we were gonna ask for in the first place.
Commissioner Sherrin also, you said that we can amend this, so this is not really looked at till the beginning of the legislature?
Correct, so we have to have it turned in, and so DFA approves this, we do have the opportunity to amend it. For example, if we are successful with the CDBG, maybe we, we could still leave that in, say, we want to move on to phase three, which is drainage or whatever. But this is a, this is a working document that we can end in the future. I would suggest of making it until, I was gonna have to get approval, but it's gonna be looked at, but it's not gonna go in a legislature's desk until...
So, you know, whatever we think right now we can amend, because what I want to do is get a little bit more informed, so, I'm probably gonna call the state senator or rep, and ask for some advice on how to do this. And if they say, hey, this is what you're to ask for, or, you know, you're, it's better if you ask for just the original amount or something, then I'll come back and, and I'll let you guys know, you know, but I think, let's just lay out our best plan, and with knowledge that we can amend it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm gonna obviously defer to your expertise, you and Misha's expertise at some level, but I'm not convinced that the title of what we're asking for needs to be changed significantly. I guess because I just really think that drainage has to be, I've met out there, I've looked at what's going on out there, I think drainage has to be an integral part of our planning process in order for the money that we're spending on ADA compliance to be, you know, so, but we're not back here in ten years saying all of our ADA stuff washed out.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we do need to change that title, that title saying we're asking for ADA money, so we would need to change that title, and show that our different phases include ADA, drainage, et cetera, et cetera. So, we can put that package together, if you guys, this gives Misha nice something to work on, we can bring it back to you again, and if you, Commissioners, have the opportunity to speak with Ashland and Gray representatives and have an idea by the twenty second of August, that will also be helpful, then you guys could approve those. So, at least in our time, to figure out how we could phase this, make sure that we can justify what we're asking for, and then also you and the board would have an idea of what the legislators are looking at as far as having funding, if that's acceptable.
Mr. Chair, may we table this item?
Second by Commissioner Billings, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you all for your attention, sir.
Thank you, sir. So, moving on to the next item of the agenda, consideration of resolution R-1950, adoption of required community development block grant annual certification and commitment.
Chair, we approve resolution R-1550.
Okay, second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion?
I just wanted to defer to our managers, say, you have anything you need?
Yes, sir, this is an annual requirement.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, proposal, proposal, RFP, item one, and can we, can our questions stop working for us?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, in notice, our initial recommendation upon opening of the bids was to award to CD General contractors. Since that time, that contractor has been deemed unresponsive due to some failure to complete some required paperwork for FAA funding, so they've been deemed unresponsive. So, our recommendation would be to award to Classic Industries for the base bid and lots two, three, and four.
That's a shame. Any, I was shocked by the difference between the bids on lot four, what was up with that?
So, speculation on our part, it's interesting when you want, contractors tend to pad on the front end, pad on the back end, I think that's what you see here, is one contractor chose to pad on lot number two, and the other one chose to pad on lot number four.
Even though they knew they couldn't mix the match?
And I will tell you that bid lot number four, for that scope of work, it's like the windows, and it's the exterior facade, sort of stuff. I don't believe in any way, shape, or form that we can get a contractor to come back and do that for the amount that he has bid, so that's our recommendation to bid the entire, and also if we don't award this today, then we lose our FAA money, and we have to apply it again till next year.
Mr. Chair, we approve the award of this contract to Classic Industries in for bid lots one, two, three, and four.
I'll second that. Second by Commissioner Billings, discussion? If you have a question about Classic Industries, what work is the county done with them before? Or what work are you familiar with out there?
I'm not personally, I'm not personally familiar with it, if that one of them.
So...
Yeah, we've got some...
I can't remember, but they do, they say, they have with them, like, after all the contractors and so, based on Mr. Price's...
Oh, actually, this is the gentleman that we're working with on Baton.
The Classic Industries?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Do we need to specify the amount when I make my motion?
If you do, the amount would be six hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and sixty plus interest rates, if you choose to put the amount.
Would it drop to six thirty-one ninety? Plus interest rates, so, can you specify the amount, this is the bid number four?
Then if you look at the last column, it's six eighty-three five sixty.
That's based on...
Oh, that is, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong column. So, no, six thirty-one, plus GRG.
Exactly.
Because that doesn't include GRG.
I still don't have any to specify that.
You don't have to specify the amount, because that could potentially change, or change orders, or things that might come up, so, what we need is for you to award to Classic Industries, and what we're awarding, which would be base bids, lots two, three, and four. Now, I'm not sure. Correct, for Rebecca.
Okay, second motion stands.
Do we have a stretch, Chair?
I see.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So, any further discussion, or discussion? See you tomorrow, go ahead, discussion.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, does the airport manager want to say anything about this?
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are you have a question? Now, we've got it, so who'll be responsible to hold the contractors' heat for the fire? I was impressed with Jukas and the construction, and what Misha did out there, there were some problems with that building, and that they had the contractor, the contractor said, well, we could patch it this way, and that way, and they said, no, you're gonna do it right, and they went out there, actually torched some stuff out, and it was expensive, and did it right. Who's gonna hold this contract, who's gonna rest this contract?
It's a combined effort between the staff, so, you know, they're often more of a did-to-be, and then, you know, when we do, issues arise, we sit down and discuss it, and decide what our course of action is, and certainly always gonna hold the contractors' heat to the fire, because we are a contractor that says you will do this, and the scope of work that they are obligated to, goodbye to us.
Okay, thanks. We'll be moving then, okay. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, Commissioner, you report, Commissioners, do you have any report?
Sure, I'm looking forward to our Mexico Upper Economics Conference, it's going to be right here in October, so I think it's a great place to get some knowledge, and maybe help us with some planning, you know, and again, I would advocate for us to do our own plan for what we need, you know, and as I was saying, I think, you know, I wish we would get a calendar, so we can put all the events up like this, because for me, I'm a very gradual person, I don't see it, I don't forget about it, just like why I was here at the meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, really?
So, that's all I have.
And Commissioner Billings?
Well, sure, on Tuesday, I wasn't here, especially Monday, Tuesday, I was at the Clean Energy Summit sponsored by Senator Martin Heinrich and his staff, and I thought it was a very well-done conference. It was very practical, to my, it wasn't a surprise, it was really focused on what local governments, what countries, that's local governments can take. They had a lot of experts in the room, with a lot of expertise on many different subjects. It's a shame we weren't able to send a second person to go to the workshops, and people wanted to go and just pick them. I ended up attending one on electric vehicles, and another on solar energy production, and came away from both, inspired that Grand County can continue to take steps to increase our clean energy commitment. I'd like to make a presentation to you all at the next meeting, especially on the solar part, because it's reasonably complex, it's, you know, I've been following this PACE program for some time, priority assessed clean energy, and I learned a lot more in two days than I learned in a couple of years, and trying to figure it out, so, I'll try to share that with you, and come here and weigh it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Billings? I just have a question about scheduling, our next meeting will be the work session on the tenth, is everybody gonna be able to make that, I'm willing to be there?
What's the number? Ten?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping. So, yeah, let's go back to August. I just want to make sure everyone's, we're not gonna be combining meetings, and that everybody can make the next couple of meetings, so the twentieth and the twenty-second, and the tenth and the twelfth, we have a week to do this?
Yes, following the fourth, if you are really looking ahead, the second meeting of September, I will be backpacking with all my students.
On the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth, is that right?
And the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Unless the strange monsoon pattern continues, and the school is having to postpone that trip, but the way it's scheduled now, I will not be in town.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to look at it.
Anything, any other report? No, that's it. Can Commissioner...
So, I attended the Outdoor Rad Conference last year in Las Cruces, and I would just follow up on Mr. Solis's comments, it was an inspiring conference, I learned a lot, and came back from that conference very excited about what the...
very excited about what the possibilities are for pursuing outdoor recreation as just part of our overall economic diversity process for this community. And I would really encourage everyone to attend the 3rd, 4th, we're really lucky to have here. And then there are some other community activities that are happening on Saturday, October the 5th specifically because of the outdoor rep conference. One of those is Pedalista, which is an annual bike festival, and it is actually, we're greatly expanding that this year to focus on the kinds of things that have already been done to make cycling and walking safer in our communities. And also, we encourage kids and their families to get out on our trails, et cetera. And then, um, the, there is also going to be a celebration of the 20th anniversary of the purchase of Boston Hill and the work that they're, have accomplished in the last year, year they have for on Boston Hill that makes some of those trails incredibly more accessible. So, 3rd, 4th, and 5th of October is gonna be a really great weekend in Grand County.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, I really have no, no, you know, report this, this, um, this meeting, but I wanna thank all the commissioners and staff for the wonderful discussion we had. And, uh, thank you, guys. That's it for me.
Mr. Chair, would you like a motion, Mr. Chair?
Second. Second by Commissioner Billings, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I, I motion carries.